Madison City Council, April eleventh, uh, City Council meeting to order, please. Um, with that, we can we start with the, uh, in- invocation, please, from Madison Police Chaplain Brian Hill.
Baron.
Baron Hill, I'm sorry, I can't read.
Sorry, we'll get you some glasses.
Not far from it.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everyone that's represented in this house today. We ask for your divine wisdom as we navigate the issues of this city, Father. We ask for a blessing on everyone that's in charge right now. Bless the leadership, bless our mayor, Father, and bless this council in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, let the agenda be what it is and allow that it will become through every aspect of this agenda. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, we bless you, we praise you, we magnify you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hill. And would you please follow me in place?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the greatest, one nation, under God, and with no fear.
I get roll call, please.
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
We have a forum, so we'll move forward. Um, I have one amendment to the agenda on the fin- on the... This in the, is it an agenda?
It's under departmental reports, building.
Under departmental reports, under building. It says paid from general fund, but it's, yeah, but it's actually from department budget.
Opposite.
Oh, it's paid from the general fund instead of the general budget. Okay, I'm sorry about that. That's the only change that I know of. Is there any others? Not, we'll move forward with that. Can I get approval of amendments for March twenty-eighth?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is minutes from, uh, from work session on the twenty-eighth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes. Uh, next is presentation of awards, and we'll start with some proclamations.
All right, I have four proclamations, and we're starting with the National Children's Advocacy Center. So I can kind of read a little bit of it. Yeah. So all four of these are important to us, and so as we have this, the first one is on Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I'm just gonna read a couple of these things and then hand this off to you, let you say a couple of words if you'd like. So whereas one in ten children will be sexually abused before the age of eighteen, one in five children solicited sexually while they're on the internet, twenty percent of children who experience abuse are sexually abused before the age of eight, or the ninety percent of children are abused by a family member or someone they know or trust, and sixty percent of child abuse victims never tell anyone during childhood. So in nineteen eighty-five, Congressman, at that time Bud Kramer, supported and helped found, found, uh, the National Children's Advocacy Center. It was created in nineteen eighty-five, uh, and re- revolutionized in the United States the response to child sexual abuse. So whereas through the work of its client and family services in the city of Madison, city of Huntsville and Madison County, and development and child abuse response professionals across the world, the NCAC serves as a beacon of hope for thousands of children, uh, child abuse victims every year. Now therefore, I Paul Finley, Mayor of the city of Madison, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Madison, and we are pleased to give this to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Finley, and to all of the city council people. We are just so appreciative. The National Children's Advocacy Center is a local nonprofit. We take care of kids in Huntsville, Madison, and Madison County. And we are so appreciative of the support of the city of Madison. Um, we take care of y'all's kids. The hard things that Mayor Finley mentioned that are happening to our children, when they are able to disclose and tell their truth, we are able to help them. We've got to normalize this conversation. We are celebrating April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, but I want us all to have every month as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We need to make sure that our greatest, most precious commodity is taken care of and loved and made sure that they have a safe, healthy childhood. So thank y'all so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do. Next up is Donate Life Month, and it's Patience Jones. Is Patience here? She comes. And I'm not a donor mom, is that correct? Yes, yeah, so son was a donor, and that's awful special. And you guys, when it talks about Donate Life Month, becoming an organ eye or tissue donor, one individual can save and heal the lives of more than seventy-five people. Uh, during National Donate Life Month, we honor the compassion and generosity of registered donors, donor families, and living donors, and recognize the commitment to medical professionals, researchers, innovators, champions, and national parents, uh, partners who work tirelessly to save and heal lives throughout donation and transplant- transplantation. So over, uh, more than one hundred thousand Americans, twelve hundred Alabamians, are currently on the national transplant waiting list. And the city of Madison feels that donate life, uh, cause of saving and healing lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation is of such immediate and worthwhile importance that I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the city of Madison, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-two as Donate Life Month in the city of Madison, and we are pleased to donate this, or give this to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll let you take, say a couple of words.
I guess, long story short, um, about five years ago, I lost my son in a tragic accident. He was twenty-one. And I had always known from previous conversations with him that he wanted to be an organ donor. And so, as tough as it was to lose him, it wasn't a hard decision to make, go ahead and go ahead and be a donor. So he lives on in so many ways, and I've had the privilege of meeting some of the recipients of his organs, his kidney and his heart. And, um, I guess at the end of the, at the end of the day, as far as, um, organ donation goes, when we leave this world, we won't need them anymore. So if we can prevent somebody else from having to stand up here and say this, then I think it's a worthwhile call.
Sarah Sledge from our library here. Here they come. So this is also National Library Week. And so we, Sarah, are pleased to present this to you for that. And I'm gonna read just real briefly, today's libraries are less about what they have on the shelves, more about what they can do with and for their communities. And they have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds can come together and learn alongside one another. Libraries and librarians help patrons find tools to help improve the quality of their life. Libraries will promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy, and strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve. So, uh, libraries, library, uh, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. And I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the city of Madison, do hereby proclaim the week of April third through the ninth as National Library Week in the city of Madison, and we are so pleased, Sarah, that you are taking this and take care of our library. Yes, thank you so much. I'll let you say a word and get this out of your mouth.
Well, thank you, Council, and, um, Mr. Mayor, for having us here today. Um, your library is healthy and relevant in more ways than it ever has been after surviving the last few years in a pandemic. I have to tell you that because of your support, the support of the city, the support of our library board, and our friends at the library, your library had its highest year of use in fiscal year twenty-one. We circulated fifty thousand items more than our highest year to date. So that's, that speaks to the, to the interests and the education of our community. So congratulations on that. Um, we, we are looking at our new opportunities. We're so excited about the way that people are wanting to use the library in today's world. And we've got one opportunity that we're so excited about that I have to share. Um, there's a group out of Aurora, Colorado called Higher Orbits that has a program called Go For Launch, where they are going to be here in July for three days straight for eighth graders through twelfth graders to spend three days learning collaboratively with a real astronaut. And at the end of the program, they will have winners who will be taking their experiments up into space. They, the kids won't be taking them, the astronauts will be taking their experiences up into, um, experiments up into space. And, you know, these are just the great ways that we are looking for the library to be able to serve the community. Um, we're still taking care of our early literacy, um, readers. Our storytimes are so big right now that our attendance has exceeded the capacity of our storytime room, and we're now using the big auditorium at the library. So we've got a community of readers. Thank you very much. We have a presentation from the friends of the library.
So during Library Week, we announce our donation to the library. We do a yearly donation. We're gonna announce that and give that to Sarah to help run funds the library. And I'm gonna shamelessly plug, the, uh, way we raise money is we raise money through our annual dues. If you're not a friend of the library, you should consider it. But we also run the Friends of Library bookstore within the library. So if you're looking for a used book at a very reasonable price, stop by. That is by far our largest fundraiser, and it allows us to give Sarah a yearly donation of sixteen thousand dollars. Also donate books to the library, which they in turn will take and resell, then you can read them and bring them back. It's a continuous cycle that works well for everyone. And lastly, uh, the Proclamation for Fair Housing Month, coming on up here. There we go. Huntsville area realtors. And I think this is really important, um, and last but not least, just the last one to get it in, right? Um, so April eleventh, twenty twenty-two marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, which, uh, is a national policy for fair housing without regard for race, color, religion, sex, family status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. The Huntsville Area Association of Realtors is committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our communities and support programs that will educate the public about the right of equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone, uh, of their right to fair housing. So whereas, uh, acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunities are redundant and common and to a common sense of decency and fairness, so now therefore, Paul Finley, Mayor of the city of Madison, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-two as Fair Housing Month in the city of Madison, and we are pleased to give this to you. I'll let you say a couple of words also.
Thanks, everybody. I don't know how anybody did it tonight, standing in front of here, and how y'all do it every single, uh, few weeks. But, um, thank you all for, uh, being such champions of fair housing and, uh, our real estate community. Um, we are the Huntsville Area Association of Realtors, but we are Madison County, and, uh, this is something we take very seriously and our realtors take very seriously, and, uh, we just appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is public comments. We not have anybody that signed up, but if anybody would like to come and address the council and mayor. We'd love to hear from you.
Yes, ma'am. CBI Archin, uh, I just wanna mention something, especially for people that are watching this and don't have an agenda. Uh, on the agenda, we have two resolutions that, uh, for grass cutting in the city. Uh, one of them is, uh, almost a hundred thousand a year, and the next one is, uh, if you divide, if you keep, we talked about about twelve, and I realize you don't have to cut so much, we're talking about three hundred thousand. Uh, to me, that's a lot of money for, for the, uh, for the cutting of grass and especially the right of ways. Now, I know I don't drive over the city a lot, but I mean, I am on the collector's roads and I am out. And many times I see, uh, these right of ways high. And for three hundred thousand dollars a year, it should look like the Masters are putting green. And we've all watched the Masters this weekend, I'm sure. My husband's from Augusta, so I'm very familiar with the Masters. Um, I just wanna mention that, uh, I assume, I don't think they do, but I think they, uh, they're gonna come across some, uh, uh, election signs that are in the right of way. I don't know if they take them up, but I think they should. And I'd like to bring that up, too. There are a lot of election signs that are not in the right of way, that are in the right of way. There are a lot of them on my street, and, uh, mine is not. Mine is way off, up in my yard, like it should be. And some of the people that have them on the right, uh, in the right of way should know better. But, uh, I'd like for somebody in the city to check on these signs. And if the, when they cut the grass on the right of way, if they do not move the, remove these signs, they should.
Yes, ma'am.
I got a lot of things to talk about. Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
It's Margie Daly, resident since two thousand and four. I have several topics to speak about. Number one is the bonds. We're fully bonded out, and, um, I hear we're trying to take bank loans now. That's unheard of, and the conclusion for that could be three things: bankruptcy, state takeover, or annexed to Huntsville. Number two, kickbacks. There are kickbacks going on in the city. I'll read the definition if I have time, so you can figure out what I'm talking about. And then there's something on the agenda for parking. Realize, less parking does not mean less cars. And there's a lot of young people that will be looking for apartments, and you're gonna get two, three roommates, all with cars. So to reduce parking is ludicrous. It's actually ludicrous. Okay, then I wanna talk about our parks. Number one, Dublin Park, and AYSO. AYSO brings in seventy-something million dollars a year, okay? We have residents that dedicate their time and volunteer for this organization. I'm sure they would volunteer for Madison City youth soccer instead of sending millions or whatever we send to California to pay three people, and I have their tax returns. They're online, they're on Friends of Dublin Park, on Facebook. Anyone can look at them. It is a scam, okay? The uniforms, the kids pay a ton just to step on our park, our park that was donated from residents of Madison, not the city, that wasn't a city park, that was given to the people. It was a beautiful park with green- It was a beautiful park with green space. There is not one place to sit, walk. You gotta walk around these horrible-looking cyclone fences. Why? They don't use them. I look at that, but I don't care. I have people lying to my face. Oh, they're used. No, they're not used. My husband and I go past this park all the time. They are not used. The only day they're used out of the year, it's a weekend, when they train seven states of referees and coaches in that park. Why can't we just take it over? And the same people that are running it now, the Madison residents, I'm sure they would volunteer for Madison instead of all this money going to California. Then there's Palmer Park. Now, I really don't go to Palmer Park, but when I put up about Dublin Park on the neighborhood site, everybody started chiming in about Palmer Park and how bad the fields are and this and that. And, you know, as far as those fences, really Dublin, but I just wanted to mention Palmer Park, 'cause they're saying it's like really dilapidated. And we need parks to be safe for our kids. We could have a Taj Mahal trash stadium. Taj Mahal, the best word, the best locker room.
You could wrap up, you could wrap up, Ms. Daly, that, you could wrap up, please, that'd be...
Don't I have an extra minute?
No, ma'am.
Anyway, we got the Taj Mahal at the trash stadium, and I think that we should try to think about our children.
Is there anyone else that'd like to address the council and mayor? I will move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
The finance committee meeting will be next week on Tuesday at ten a.m. We are scheduled to receive our city audit report at that time. And we'll release an agenda close to that meeting next week. The consent agenda items are pretty short this evening, and the finance committee members have reviewed the bills and the periodic bills to be paid. And so I submit that for your approval and a move to approve.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and I'll respond back to Ms. Beebe. Ms. Beebe, we are going after every one of those signs in the right of way every week. They give me a report. I didn't put it out this week as far as how many, but I will next, probably Sunday. Probably getting anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred signs each week right now with the elections, and it'll probably be more as we get closer. It doesn't matter who it is, what candidate it is, whether we know them, we don't know them, or whether they're doing gutters or vinyl or whatever. If they're in the right of way, they're coming up, and that's what we continue to do. They just, there's a lot to go up. It takes all week to kinda get around and get them, but we're working on those. So, really neat thing that I have here, and I'm gonna ask for council support on, is I have four checks from Ball Corpse or our Trash Pandas. The four checks, three of them are from their payment that they owed us from last year, so we're gonna be fully paid. And they went ahead and gave us sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the first installment of the rental this month, this year, which is ahead of the game. And I will say the finance committee had said, hey, could we possibly, if you guys already have it, start getting that on a timely basis? And they agreed. So I guess I'll start by asking for council support of accepting six hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and one dollars from Ball Corpse.
Move to approve.
Second.
(laughing)
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Six hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and one dollars. It's way more than, yeah, that's from la, almost every bidder, that's from last year, sixty-two five is for this year.
Very good.
We're trying to stay away from a state takeover.
Yeah.
So I think that'll help us.
(laughing)
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and along those same lines, I think everybody's well aware, opening night tomorrow night. You know, I just went and talked with a lot of the investors who are in this year. Obviously, gonna be a completely different year, sixty-nine games scheduled. Let's see if we can't get through this week without a rainout. Not sure it'll happen, but, you know, I told them they could have one this year, and that's about it. So, but opening night, excited about that. They'll be here all week. Wanted to share with council, one of the things that we had a majority vote on last week was the approval of the amended budget. One of the things we added was more money in there for oil and gas. Just to give you guys an idea of what February to March looked like, February for the entire city, oil and gas was about thirty-two thousand five hundred. This year, it was fifty thousand and thirty-three, this month, it was fifty thousand and thirteen dollars. So pretty substantial increase in what we saw from oil and gas prices. You guys looked at that. We budgeted for it. We should be okay, but that did make a big difference as far as gas prices. So with that said, that's all I have.
Very good. Edition number one.
Yes, sir. I have one item for your approval and then several items to mention. My item for approval is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash one one six dash R. And this is approving the revised City of Madison Employee Safety Manual. And before I ask for a vote, I wanted to give some background information. The city's safety agreement with our workers' comp provider requires that the city have a safety committee and a safety program. In two thousand and two, our city employees developed the first customized safety manual. In their own words, addressing safety rules citywide, and the council adopted the manual at that time. In two thousand and five, it was revised, and then most recently in two thousand and twelve, it was revised. I would like to recognize the current safety committee members and commend them and thank them for all of the work that they have done in this safety committee manual that they have. This is their own living document. Those members are Scott Adams, Laura Brake, Terrell Cook, Mike Gentle, Chris Lund, Kevin Molt, Steve Perry, Kelly Rowland, Carol Shanifelt, Jenny Spain, Alicia Walden, and Yvonne Williams. And this committee has put many hours into this safety manual, and they are to be commended for their service. And I would like to ask for a round of applause for them. (applause) Thank you so much to each of those members. Several of them are here tonight, and we just really appreciate your hard work. And so with that, I ask for approval of this resolution.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. I do have a couple of items I'd like to mention. The first will be held on April twenty-third at our wonderful Madison Public Library. It's a program called Countdown to Kindergarten. Is your child ready for kindergarten? Please bring your three- to five-year-old to explore and practice the skills your child needs for a smooth transition to kindergarten. Will be at the Madison Public Library, April twenty-third at ten a.m. And this is just a fun opportunity for parents to bring their young children in to see basically if they can follow directions. Can they put their backpack on? Can they open a milk carton, those sort of things? So I'd encourage you, if you have an incoming kindergartner, to participate in that program. On Friday, I attended along with Chairman Dale Strong, One Generation Away, over at Building Church. It was a reach out to the entire community. This organization, this Five Oh One C Three, was founded in Tennessee for the sole purpose of eliminating food insecurity by bringing healthy food to people in need. And their website is W W W One Gen Away. And I would encourage you, if you are interested in this type of ministry or program to help our neighbors, to please look into it. The one kind of negative comment or concern that I have is Comcast is going throughout our city installing new cable lines, and they are having some accidents with cutting other cable lines and at least one water line that I'm aware of. So if that happens to you, please reach out to us, and we can, you know, put in your address and get that repaired. I had a chance to do that on Saturday in our neighborhood when Comcast cut a WOW line, and they were there within a couple of hours to repair that line. So I'm appreciative of their diligence in getting these things fixed. My shop local spotlight is appropriate for this week. It's Rocket City Tax Accounting. That's owned by Gwen and Greg Harrison. And if you need help with your taxes, which are this week, April fifteenth, I would encourage you to reach out to them. They're a wonderful supporter of Madison business. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Edition number two.
Yes, last week, I was, it was my pleasure to attend the Madison Police Department drone demo. And it was really exciting. They had several vendors that were there to show the drones that they had and to allow the officers from across the state. And I believe there might have been somebody from a different state, wasn't there, Chief? Yes, somebody from Georgia that came. And everybody was very positive and complimentary of our police department for holding the event and allowing them access that they might not have had to preview these drones and to do demonstrations with them. Since our last council meeting, I've attended the Madison Utilities Board meeting. They are actively working towards having remote water, water meter reading capability. And so that will be a very interesting thing for our city. And we also attended the Industrial Development Board meeting. Also, Two Ribbon Cuttings Premier Dental Spa over in Town Madison, and Alabama Credit Union out on County Line Road. And I want to commend our fire department, because during the ribbon cutting out on County Line Road, a lady fell off a curb, and she hit her head, and they were very, very quick to respond. Thank you, Chief Bailey, for your help. And even though we were still on hold with nine-one-one, trying to get them to come out, the police department, I mean, the fire department was there almost at the same time the nine-one-one answered the phone. So that was very, very nice of them to come out and do that. This Friday at ten a.m., there is a ribbon cutting for the Downtown Rescue Mission thrift store, which is just on the side of the public shopping center over here. And also very excited about opening day tomorrow for the Trash Pandas. That's all.
Edition number three. Any new business? I very rarely have a lot of new business, but I, when people come up here and talk about this council and point fingers and say people are taking kickbacks, as council president, I'm not gonna stand for that. If you have, if you need to call the ethics commission, please do. But I've been on two councils, and I have never seen one person up here do anything. I understand. I understand what a kickback is, but I'm just saying, for you to come around and attack this council...
Excuse me, public comments are over.
Yes, ma'am. Anyway, edition number five.
Last week, applications closed for Board of Education. I'm pleased to report that we had an outstanding number of applicants apply. We wanna thank members of the community who raised their hand and said they were willing to serve and filled out an application. It is not easy to put your name in and be a part of a public committee selection process. And so I wanna thank everyone who applied. We had so many outstanding applicants that you're gonna make our jobs really hard in terms of selecting or down-selecting for interviews. I can tell you, because I sat on the other side of this dais, and when I applied the first time for school board, I didn't get selected. It took my second time to apply, but it helped that I went through the interview process one time before I was selected. And I've been a part of an applicant pool that has been in the twenties or thirties. And then when I reapplied for school board, I was one of two applicants. And so I like it when I see engagement, and I really am appreciative. And I think I can speak fairly on behalf of my fellow council members that we are honored to have your applications, and we're going to be reviewing them and doing our, taking our jobs very seriously and trying to select the very best person for the Board of Education, because we know how important our school system is for the city. So thank you.
Very good. Edition number six.
All right, Renee. Yeah, I would like to piggyback on what she said. We have fifteen applicants for the school board. It took me literally a couple hours to read each and every page, which I did. And when I go through, I don't, I take it very seriously. I look at the school involvement. I look at what they're doing in the community. But most of all, I look at, see what they are doing for the benefit of the children. You know, the children at the heart of it, because that's what, that's what the school is, right? So that's how I looked at it personally. Put a lot of thought into the selection process. And it is the selection process that the city council makes independent of the school board. Just wanted to make that clear. Second thing, Madison Street Festival. They are having a town hall on April fourteenth, on Thursday, from six to seven o'clock at the Fellowship of Faith Church on Maple Street. We want to have the residents and the business owners that are affected by the festival to come out, to talk to us what they think that we need to be doing better, just to communicate what their needs are, and so we can plan this in a way that benefits the whole community. So that's this Thursday, if you're interested in joining. One of my favorite family events for the City of Madison is happening this Saturday. It's the Easter Egg Extravaganza, it's April sixteenth at Dublin, for the children ages one to five. It's at nine a.m. For the older kids, the six to ten, it's at ten-thirty. There is gonna be a free shuttle bus running from Bob Jones. So if anybody's ever been there, it is the most amazing thing to watch. I see Gail over there smiling. We used to work it together. It's just so much fun to see all these kids come with their little baskets, and they are so excited. But in addition to the one for the whole city, the one for special events children, that's also on Saturday. It's at the main building. Registration's at twelve-thirty, day strike's at one, and then there's activities following it. So it is just so much fun to be involved, so if you have time to volunteer. I'm sure Cory will take any volunteers. Yes, he's nodding his head. That can come and help set up. It's just a wonderful event for the whole city. Senior Center, also, those that have come out to volunteer, thank you so much. I've been making food. I've been helping out in so many ways, and it is just a wonderful place. They still need help. That's why I'm bringing it up again. They could still use volunteers. They're gonna have a senior prom on the twenty-third of this month. It's hosted by United Way Youth Leader Council, and it's from one to two o'clock. So if anybody can come out and help with that, please do. It is just a great way to serve the community. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Edition number seven.
No new business.
All right, there's no board, board committee appointments tonight? There is one public hearing?
This is ordinance of twenty twenty-two dash sixty-eight, and this is amending section five dash two of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the approval process for multifamily or projects that have multifamily units in them. They might be just multifamily or a mixed-use project. The text amendment would move the approval process for a site plan back to the Planning Commission from the City Council. Planning Commission and staff are in support of this request, which we are doing at the request of the City Council. And there were no comments at the Planning Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
You guys do public hearing now.
I need to open the public hearing. Anybody like to address mayor and council over this? Tonight, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a movement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
There were a couple comments, but we won't. Just among, among the planning commission.
Amongst the commissioners, but not necessarily from the general public. Yes, there's always...
They were mostly in jest.
Yes, they were, so I declined to mention them. But thank you, Mr. Seaford.
Any other discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Sorry. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, department reports, and we have building.
Building, I've got Resolution Twenty Twenty Two dash one ten dash R. It's awarding the bid for groundskeeping services to Tidewater Landscape Management with annual cost of ninety-eight thousand one hundred seventy dollars. with annual cost of ninety-eight thousand one hundred seventy dollars, and that'll be from the general funds.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I do have a couple questions. Um, in the past, the beautification board has been concerned that as the grounds have been kept, some of the trees have been hit with the mowers and that sort of thing. Is there anything in this contract that would, uh, guide the- the company to be more careful, to have boundaries, to put?
If they damage something, they're supposed to replace it, you know. I know there was a couple issues several years ago about the irrigation system wasn't working properly, and that's all functioning properly now. That's raised a couple trees, but that should be taken care of.
Okay, yeah, I know this had to do with the mowers hitting the- the trees themselves, 'cause there wasn't enough mulch around them and stuff like that.
I'll check on it.
So I just didn't know if it was part of the contract or exactly what.
If they damage something, they're supposed to replace it, but I wouldn't worry about that, but we'll check on that.
Okay. Well, I can put you in contact with the beautification board, and they can show you the trees. (laugh) Okay. That's all.
I had a question. How does this bid compare to previous years? Is- are things just getting more expensive or is this the line?
They went up a little bit from last year, from the- the gas and oil, of course.
Mm-hmm.
We had one other bid that was turned in, and that's the only two bids we got for this, and the other one was a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
That was the- the only other bid we got. (laugh)
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Can- can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes. Next is engineering.
I have one item for you tonight. It's Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash zero eight five dash R. It's requesting authorization for our engineering inspection and construction agreement with Aldat for the Madison Boulevard improvements. It'll be five million dollars worth of federal funds, and then one million two hundred and fifty thousand, um, city matching funds to be paid from the departmental budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Excited to get it done.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Can- can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is fire.
One request for your consideration tonight. Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two one twelve R. Authorizing an agreement for receipt of emergency management grant funds and purchase of e- equipment for emergency response operations. Uh, amount of twenty-four thousand seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents will be paid from DHS through- through the state.
Move- move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
You sure we're quick to get that sort of done?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm on that.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief.
Next is planning.
Alrighty, we have, uh, Resolution Twenty Twenty Two dash one zero seven dash R, and this is to set a public hearing on a zoning text amendment to update our parking space requirements. We're asking you to set the public hearing for May twenty-third. Um, this did go to the Planning Commission. Uh, we had a couple of, uh, changes from the Planning Commission, which we've incorporated into the ordinance that is attached to this item, so it reflects their two changes. Um, their staff report is available on the website. I'm happy to cha- um, provide it out to you, and it kind of talks about the rationale for the changes. Um, briefly, the city's parking standards haven't been changed since the, um, uh, since before two thousand. So they're a bit obsolete and out of date in some areas, and so we, um, are looking to update them. And so, um, we will see you on May twenty-third, and- but I'll send that staff report out, which is available on the website.
Very good.
Need you to approve the-
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can- can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And the next item is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash one zero one dash R. And, uh, this is to accept a sidewalk easement, and there should be- is there a second page to that, gentlemen? Hmm. Okay. Okay, there we go.
You know I gotta have pictures.
(laugh) Um, so this is for the corner of Hughes, uh, and Madison Boulevard. Um, we've approved, uh, the city's approved a, um, gas station convenience store for this location. And, um, this is accepting the sidewalk, um, easement. The sidewalk is gonna be, um, on the private property just because of the site configuration. So this is a- an easement, so there'd be public access over that sidewalk. So we're recommending you approve this.
Move to approve?
Second.
Double O.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion? Can- can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Public works.
Let's have one item for you tonight. It's Resolution Twenty Twenty Two one oh nine dash R. Uh, it's a right-of-way mowing bid to Tidewater Landscape in the amount of twenty-nine fifty-two one seventy-six per month to be paid summer gas tax.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Did you take Ms. Beebe's notes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Paul, can you- Mayor, can you speak to that? I mean, I know in the past few years, I mean, I know, you know, as well, I mean, we put a lot of measures in to help with that. Can y'all speak just a little bit to things we're doing and have done to help make sure that they mow when they're supposed to and as regularly as they can?
I'll take- once you start, and I'll pick up.
Yeah, it's- you need to always keep in mind, this is everything is weather-dependent when you're trying to mow.
Yes.
Um, this was only a six percent increase.
Can't talk a little bit louder, please.
This was only a six percent increase from three years ago when it was bid. It rolls over every year for the third year.
Um, we have, I have, an in- in-house inspector, if you will, he goes around. We have issues or problems called in that we go around and check weekly of where they mowed last week. They send me a weekly report every Monday morning of what they mowed the week previous.
So I think one of the first things we did in the feedback that we received a couple of years ago was ask for that weekly report. And so they worked with Kent, they sent it to Steve, then obviously weather-dependent, but also if we start hearing they're behind, or they start, you know, areas of concern, we are immediately able to- to get ahold of them, and they've been fairly good about following back up. You know, as happens, you know, if they get behind its equipment or just weather, but trying to implement it on the front end to set the expectations properly. Here's what it looks like to be successful. Please follow this, and then give a report at the end of the week. So we get that every week.
Thanks, y'all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any- any other discussion? Can- can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes. Next is Cory with Rick.
Good evening. I have Resolution Twenty Twenty Two one eleven dash R. Awarding Recreation Department uniforms to Rydell Inc. in the amount of ten thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Um, that ten thousand dollar number's a little deceiving because it's- we're bid on each piece, but we won't be ordering ten thousand dollars worth of uniforms. It's just, that's what the total came out to be. Majority of this will be for lifeguards, rackets, shirts.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we- we got, uh, re- revenue.
My favorite person. Tonight.
Just 'cause it's the last one this evening. Uh, one item on the agenda, a request for a special retail license thirty days or less has been received from, uh, Ball Corpse Food and Beverage LLC, uh, doing business with Trash Panda Catering. Um, this request is in conjunction with the, uh, fair in the parking lot during the period of May twelfth through the twenty-second. The request is the same as last year.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Move second.
It was Teddy and then Mara. Am I right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Powell, then Roblesky.
Teddy motion. Mara second.
Okay. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there any miscellaneous bi- business or announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
So be it.